Good evening. This is the fourth meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. It is now called to order. I would ask that you please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Iman Earl El Amin from the Muslim Community Cultural Center of Baltimore. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. Peace be upon you. Please stay in your respective positions. With God's name, the merciful benefactor of the merciful Redeemer, O Creator of all things, Evolver of all things, known by many names, who has spoken to all people in all times, we gratefully acknowledge your presence with us here today. We gather here today with the intent on doing good work. Guide us to represent those who have honored us with this task. Bless our efforts with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. Help us to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths guide us, strength to act, honestly and well in all matters before us. Bless us to serve our city, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our city fairly, and help us to make decisions that promote the common good. Let us recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of all of our constituencies. As trusted servants, we seek your blessings on our deliberations and our efforts here today. We put our trust in you, the all-knowing, the all-hearing, the all-seeing. Let the people say, "Amin."
Amin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Thank you, Iman. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Ms. President, we will request.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Chef Bryce Taylor, an accomplished young chef who not only has a national profile but gives back and helps youth to have appreciation for culinary arts. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and City Council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is Bryce Taylor, and I am a 14-year-old chef from Baltimore City, and I attend Bard High School Early College in Baltimore. As early as I can remember, I've always had a love and passion for food. I sought food as communal and a way to bring people together. I decided very early that the pursuit of culinary arts was going to be my path and dream. With this passion, my ambitions rose, and I decided to take culinary classes and begin to complete and culinary competition, compete in culinary competitions as a way to gain knowledge, confidence, and experience by working with chefs from different walks of life. I competed on Food Network's Chop Junior a year and a half ago. In competition, I learned that patience, perseverance, and self-determination are integral parts of who I was at core self. Although I did not win the competition, I won so much more in invaluable life experiences that helped me even to this day as I continue to pursue my dreams. Growing up, I was larger than most of my peers, and this eventually led to me being bullied throughout most of my school years because of my weight. Oftentimes, bullying can make a person feel subconscious. I told myself I wanted to do something about it. My first step was learning to become comfortable in my own skin. I began giving cooking lessons and taught a volunteer healthy cooking class with the Junior League of Baltimore Kids in the Kitchen Program. I also teamed up with WBAL Channel 2 News and recorded a cooking segment titled "Community Crisis: Fighting Childhood Obesity." With the help of Baltimore City Schools, I host and film a monthly cooking segment titled Cooking with Chef Bryce, which airs on Comcast Education Channel 77 and on Vimeo for Baltimore City Public Schools. On the show, I visit and shop for ingredients at local markets to teach and prepare affordable and healthy after-school meal ideas for kids and their families. In 2016, I decided that entrepreneurial aspirations was not something that was out of reach for a young Baltimore teen, and I started my own company, Latchkey LLC. The mission of my company is to create and manufacture healthy, quick, low-glycemic meals for kids and recipes that kids could make for themselves while their parents are at work. I asked that my community leaders support and partner with me as I would like to create and publish cookbooks for more Baltimore kids and their families, which will feature fun, delicious recipes that everyone can enjoy. Helping to change the mindset that healthy food does not mean boring food is my goal. Not everyone can afford to eat out at chain health food restaurants. If we, as a community, work together, we can provide kids with necessary resources and information that they need to make affordable and nutritious meals right at home. Sometimes, I find that kids are more accepting of ideologies when presented by and learning from other kids. It brings me joy that I can use my personal story and social media platforms to help other kids grow their knowledge base on subjects that affect them and may not otherwise have been interesting or accessible to them in a way that was relatable. In closing, I would like to thank City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young for inviting me to speak about what is passionate to me. I love my city, and I will continue to pursue my dreams in culinary arts and lead to example to that my peers and future generations can thrive.
Thank you. And I want to tell you that I've seen some of his handiwork, some of that food this guy can throw down, trust me. And I asked him, I said, "Why didn't you bring some for all 15 of us?" But he's on a small budget. I want to go out of order.
School comes first.
But we heard you, we're going to get you some money. I want to go out of order and recognize Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chef Taylor.
Floor privileges.
Oh, I'd like to have floor privileges.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor and extended floor privileges to Chef Taylor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged.
So Chef Taylor, come on around, and I have a citation to present from the Office of the President.
From all of us.
And the entire council. And it reads, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Chef Bryce Taylor. In recognition of your culinary talents, courageous competitiveness, and dedication to the community, best of luck as you continue to compete in national competitions. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the 6th day of February 2017, signed by President Bernard Jack Young and all members." So congratulations.
I would like for his parents to stand. I know his grandma here and his mom. Can they both stand? Let's get him a hand. Our young people, they say it's our future, but they are today. If we don't take them today, there'll be no future for them. So that's my philosophy, and let's take care of our young people today. It is the Council of Customs Generalized invocation. I ask for motion, generalized prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of generalized prayer, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the general.
Ms. President, the general proceedings for the January 23rd City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
That motion approved the general. Motion by Councilman Cohen, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor adopting the general, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, the general is adopted. Bills signed by the mayor? We do not have any bills signed by the mayor. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0017, Building Fire and Related Codes, International Residential Code Corrections for the Purpose of Expressly Continuing the Regulation of Solar Photovoltaic Power Systems for All One and Two Family Dwellings and Expressly Reinstating the Application of Certain Regulations Governing Driveways and Other Paved Surfaces for All One and Two Family Dwellings. Sponsored by City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0018, Labor and Employment City Minimum Wage for the Purpose of Setting Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Rate for the years 2019 through 2023, Setting the Formula to Determine Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Rate from 2023 onward, Repealing Certain Exceptions, Creating Certain Exceptions, Defining Certain Terms, Setting the Terms and Qualifications for Wage Commission Members, Requiring the Production and Posting of Multilingual Posters, Summarizing Baltimore City's Minimum Wage Laws, Setting Baltimore City's Tip Minimum Wage Rate, Setting Baltimore City's Small Employer Minimum Wage Through 2026, Limiting withholding, Limiting the withholdings employers may take from employee wages, Allowing Any Person to Make a Complaint to the Wage Commission, Changing the Wage Commission's Procedures for Responding to Complaints, Repealing the Prohibition of Bad Faith Employee Complaints to the Wage Commission, Establishing Certain Penalties, Clarifying and Conforming Related Provisions and General Relating to the Minimum Wage to be Paid to Employees in Baltimore City. Sponsors Clark, President Young, Dorsey, Scott, Burnett, Middleton, Cohen, Snead, Reisinger.
Please note, Councilman Henry as the co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. As Scripture says, "I look to the hills, from where will my help come?" In that case, meaning the Almighty. In a much more local version of that, there are a lot of workers out there who work hard all day, sometimes three days at a time, and still cannot make ends meet. We look to DC, and there's no help. We look to Annapolis, and Annapolis has a minimum wage bill that peaks out at 10:10. We have a schedule that I've distributed that shows you how underwater workers are. When they finally arrive at that 10:10, they will come up short by thousands of dollars a year in their households. Not to read the chart, but if you are a single-parent household at 10:10, you got $21,008 a year. With all the expenses you have to pay, not, we're not talking about going to the movies. We're not talking about going out to dinner. We're talking about gas and electric, food, clothes. I don't even see shoes on here, but I'm sure they must fit in. You come out with a deficit of minus $7,286.37 a year. That's $607 a month. You're in the hole. Two-parent, two-child household, you are underwater for minus $5,072.97 a year. That's $422.74 you don't have that you just spent. And a single worker, $21,800 a year at 10:10, comes out underwater for minus $2,852.13 or $237 a month. What can we do? This bill, I hope, is what we can do. It is modest, it is gradual, it is reasonable, and it is imperative. If we plan to bring one Baltimore together, there are certain actions we have to take. The Department of Justice is a whole huge chapter of that book, but another is economic parity, not charity. People deserve the right, when they work for a living, to be respected and self-sufficient. They don't want to hand out, they don't want to stand in line every month, or every month at the end of the month because they can't buy food anymore. It's all gone, that, those deficits. They need our 98,000 of the people who live in the city and work in the city. There are over 100,000, but 98,000 of them, by actual documentation, will directly benefit from the increases this legislation provides. 98,000 people multiplied by all the people they take care of and help to pay the rent, et cetera. So, members of this council, this is a drastic step, but we're at a good point for it because the city of Baltimore just beat the state out for economic growth and the whole rest of the state. We're doing better, we're moving faster than anyone else. We have 12,000 new jobs added to our economy in the last three years. It's time to share the wealth, and it's a timely time to do so. No better time will present itself when there is no help elsewhere. So, I beg you and I thank those who have co-sponsored and are supporting this bill. I hope that others will consider joining us in this effort. But we are, as a council, one whole council, and I know that one way or the other, we will work together to bring this to fruition. Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity, and thank you for helping to lead this effort as a partner with all of us this time. It makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0019, Bike Lanes, Increase Parking Penalties for the Purpose of Allowing for the Towing of Vehicles in Properly Marked and Designated Bike Lanes, Increasing the Fine for Parking or Standing in a Bike Lane and General Relating to Bike Lanes. Sponsors Costello, President Young, Dorsey, Scott, Henry, Middleton, Reisinger, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This bill is intended to address some of the public safety issues that exist in recently installed cycle track infrastructure throughout the city. While it's difficult to tag an exact number to the amount of dollars that have been spent through federal and state funds, as well as a small portion locally on cycle track infrastructure, because oftentimes that cycle track infrastructure spending is in concert with other infrastructure spending in the right-of-way, a significant amount has been spent, to say the least, well in excess of $7 million. So it's high time that if the city is going to make that investment in cycle track infrastructure and try and push our city in the right direction, that we need to treat that cycle track infrastructure like the public right-of-way that it is. This bill does two key things. One, it raises the citation from $75 to $250 for parking in cycle track infrastructure right-of-way. And number two, it makes it an immediately towable offense, just as if you were to park your vehicle in the middle of a sidewalk or in the middle of Charles Street. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, for your support.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce the City Council ordinance from the floor.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. Second by you. All those in favor of suspended rules allowing the introduction of City Council ordinance, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged. The rules are suspended, and the ordinance can be introduced and will be City Council Ordinance 17-0020. The clerk will read the ordinance into the record.
City Council Ordinance 17-0020, Building Code Demolition Permit Fees. Ordinance for the Purpose of Modifying the Maximum Permit Fee for the Demolition of Structures. Sponsored by City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution 17-0008-R, Investigative Hearing Late Payments to Subcontractors on City Contracts for the Purpose of Calling on Representatives from the Finance Department, the Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement, the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, and Department of Public Works, General Services, and Transportation to appear before the City Council to discuss problems with late payments to subcontractors on city contracts and what steps the city can take to ensure that these problems do not endanger the ability and willingness of subcontractors to work on city projects. Sponsors Stokes, Clark, Middleton, President Young, Dorsey, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Costello, Schleifer, Cohen, Snead, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President and my colleagues, for being co-sponsors. This bill is very simple. It serves to address challenges that have come to my attention from various subcontractors, namely subcontractors getting paid in a timely manner. We need to identify the reasons for the delay in payment from prime contractors to their subs. Typically, subcontractors are small businesses and are heavily dependent on timely payments to meet their day-to-day obligations, make payments to their workers, and simply to keep their lights on. When prime contractors take 60, 90 days, or even longer to pay, that puts the subcontractors very existence in jeopardy. In this climate of accountability and transparency, I think it's only fitting to open this conversation, figure out the cause of the issue, and how we might be able to solve and keep all of Baltimore City's small businesses in business.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce the City Council Resolution from the floor.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspended rules allowing for the introduction of the City Council Resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, the rules are suspended. The resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 17-009R. The clerk. 0009R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 17-0009-R, Reaffirming Baltimore City's Status as a Welcoming City. Resolution for the Purpose of Affirming the City of Baltimore as a Welcoming City that promotes policies and programs to foster inclusion for all and serves its residents regardless of their immigration or refugee status, race, color, creed, religion, ancestry, national origin, ability to speak English, age, sex, marital status, parental status, sexual orientation, gender identification, political ideology, disability, homelessness, low income, or veteran status, and reaffirming the city's continuing commitment to advocate and support the well-being of all residents. Sponsor Scott.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Oh, okay, go ahead. Any co-sponsors? Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Snead, Councilwoman Clark. All council people? All right, all council people. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this country is supposed to be welcoming to all, no matter race, religious, or any other background issues. However, we know this country also has a history of not living up to that, but nothing... But what we're trying to do here is realize that in just a few weeks, President Trump has taken up on a personal hate-filled agenda to dismantle that core American value that this country is supposed to be welcoming and open to all. Baltimore has long been clear that they are a welcoming city. Our Mayor, Mayor Pugh, made that clear a few weeks ago that we're going to remain a welcoming city, and today, here on the City Council level, we are letting them know that the legislative body in Baltimore City also feels the same way. We will not allow our city agencies to engage in activities to help Mr. Trump on his hate-filled agenda, to get rid of our neighbors, our constituents, our young people, and our schools and our families that work and live in Baltimore, just like each and every one of us in this room today. But more importantly, Mr. President, this is also sending a message to our good friends in Annapolis that we, the City Council of Baltimore, support the Maryland Law Enforcement and Government Trust Act, also known as Senate Bill 835, that will say that the state of Maryland will also be a place that is welcoming and opening to all. And it's high time that people in Annapolis, in particular, our governor, who's been very silent, we know the governor loves press conferences, but since Mr. Trump has been in office, we haven't seen very much of him, and he's been very silent on this issue. And the time for that has to end now. He must say that Maryland is going to be welcoming and opening to all, and he can do that by supporting this legislation. And with that, Mr. President, I move to suspend appropriate rules for immediate adoption.
Hold on for one minute. Just trying to make sure we get the bill number correct. It was second by who? Councilwoman Clark? Okay, all of the in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Ms. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting the Resolution, 17-0009R, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted. You can find the Consent Countlet in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Countlet? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of approving the Consent Countlet, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this countlet is approved. We now move the bills on second, read the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0009, Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, $3 million for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of $3 million to Department of Public Works Service 730 to provide funding for the installation of combined heat and power at the Back River Wastewater Treatment Plant and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard this bill on January 31st. Had a great discussion with DPW, we're ready to move forward. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Pinkett. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approving this bill, move to third, read it.
City Council Bill 17-0010, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Law Department, $570,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $570,000 to the Law Department Service 861 to provide funding for technology purchases by the Central Bureau of Investigations to allow remote data collection and migration to a paperless office, which will improve information management, reduce existing costs and risk for the city, and improve operating efficiency and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing on this on January 31st and voted favorable, under the condition that Department of Law did provide subsequent information requested during the hearing. Department of Law did provide that information on this past Friday. I'd like to thank Acting City Solicitor David Ralph for meeting with myself and Council Members Snead and Scott to address those concerns, and at this time, I'd like to move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approving this bill, move to third, read it.
City Council Bill 17-0011, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, MR Employees' Retirement Contribution to Fire Department, $4,109,177, for the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $4,109,177 to MR Employees' Retirement Contribution to the Fire Department and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a hearing on January 31st, and I would, at this time, like to move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Any nays? The most of us approve this bill, move to third, read it. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0004, Corrected Bill 2016, for the Purpose of Correcting Certain Technical Errors and Omissions in the City Code, Repealing Certain Obsolete, Obsolescent, or Otherwise Preempted, Superseded, or Superfluous Provisions. City Council Bill 17-0004, Railway Franchise Consent to Transfer, for the Purpose of Acknowledging That Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail LLC Has sought the Consent of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to transfer the authority to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore-Annapolis Railroad in accordance to the PSC Order Number 87248 in Case 9363, granting consent for BWRR to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore-Annapolis Railroad and general relating to the transfer of a certain railway franchise.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on January 31st. I'd like to thank Representatives from the Law Department and the Department of Transportation. Spent a lot of time with us talking about this. There were a number of amendments that were voted on, four of them specifically. Three of those were technical amendments from the Department of Law, one of which was an amendment that the committee offered up, which was to change the special effective date from 30 days out from passage to immediately. Those amendments are on my colleagues' desks. At this time, I'd like to move those amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, these amendments are adopted. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves to third reader. Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Council Vice President Reissinger.
Councilman Ed Reissinger.
Ed Reissinger. You've been vice president for so long.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on Bill Number 17-0006 on Wednesday, March 15th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. The purpose to introduce new committee members and the public to the Land Use and Transportation Committee, the manner in which legislation is processed, and the functions various city agencies perform in assisting the committee in fulfilling its mission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be holding three hearings on Tuesday, February 21st. The first one will be at 10:00 AM. That's Bill Number 16-0002. That's city property, naming the park located at 1,900 through 2,100 Mount Royal Terrace as Lady Baltimore Park. At 10:05 AM, we will be hearing Bill 17-0017. That is building fire and related codes, international residential code corrections. Do I need... I need to... My apologies, Mr. President. I'd like to move this...
You have one to suspend the rules?
Yes, I would like to suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, February 21st, at 10:05 AM, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be hearing Bill 17-0017. That is building fire and related codes, international residential code corrections. Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, February 21st, at 10:10 AM, Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will have a hearing on Bill Number 17-0020, which is building code and demolition permit And, Mr. President, I would like to also announce two reminders. One, the Budget Appropriations Committee will be having a quarterly legislative oversight hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, at 2:00 PM. First three quarters of that hearing will be dedicated to the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Budget Management Research, and then there will be a portion in which we'll have a discussion with city schools. The focus of that will be on actions taken to address the deficit. I believe my colleague, who chairs the Education Youth Committee, has more on that later. And also, on February 15th, next Wednesday, at 5:00 PM, the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold its first hearing here in chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Committee announcements? Shannon? Chair of the House, Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President and members of the City Council. The Labor Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on Thursday, February 23rd, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. Go on to the next one?
You go ahead.
Okay. I move to suspend 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Snead.
The Labor Committee will hold a televised hearing on Wednesday, March 1st, 2017, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the council chambers for Council Bill 17-0018, Labor and Employment City Minimum Wage.
Thank you. All right, any more committee announcement? Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you.
Is yours talking about Costello? Let's go to him first. Chair of the House, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remind everyone that this Thursday at 4:30 PM at Patterson High School, the Education and Youth Committee will hold its second committee hearing to discuss the budget. As we know, the deficit facing city schools presents a major challenge to our city and its growth, and so we will be holding this hearing, bringing together stakeholders from across the city to address the budget deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a part of that, I would like for the Education Committee and the Budget Committee to look at getting the school system to agree to an audit, because that's very important, that this audit be done of the school system so we can find out where the deficiencies are and try to fix it. Because we don't want to be back here again, you know, next year with a deficit even larger than what they have. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I certainly will work with my colleague from the Education and Youth Committee. There are some audits taking place, but there's definitely opportunity to do a lot more, as you just described. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 16th, 2017, beginning at 10:00 AM here in council chambers. And the hearing will... At the hearing, we will have four bills. Bill Number 16-0001, it's the sale of property for 823 to 825 North Mount Street, and that will take place at 10:00 AM. We will also hear City Council Bill 17. I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry? Say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged.
For the seven... Bill Number 17-0012, that's at 10:05 AM, and that's for the sale of property for 217 North Pine Street. And also, I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry? Say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair of the House, Councilwoman...
And that's for City Council Bill 17-0013, and that's at 10:10 AM, and that's for the sale of property 907 and a half, North Fremont Avenue. And then I also like to move to suspend the rules.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce, Henry? Say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair of the House, Councilwoman...
And that's for Bill Number 17-0014, and that's at 10:15 AM, and that's for the sale of property for WS Scott Street 94, North Caroline Street, Block 851, Lot 010.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Regular announcements. Before we get to you, Councilman Dorsey, I would like to wish Councilman Burnett a happy birthday. His birthday is on February 15th. And before I get to Councilman Dorsey, Councilwoman Middleton, I want you for a moment of silence with Andre L. Graves, a longtime city employee who passed away, and his funeral was today. You got that? Andre L. Graves for a moment of silence.
Andre L.
Graves.
Graves.
Uh-huh. Longtime city employee, Department of Public Works, passed away, and his funeral was today. Chair of the House, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In our first meeting of this 72nd council, I wished happy birthday to one of my sisters. I want to wish happy birthday to my other sister today. Her birthday is this week. Again, family is very important. We're fortunate to have it. I'm thankful to be able to recognize it. I also want to extend my utmost support and thanks to Councilman Costello for introducing the bill on bike lanes. I think most of the people here know that I am an avid advocate for transit and transportation, and it is my only regret that I will not have an opportunity to vote this out of committee as I am not a member of judiciary, but thank you for putting it in.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Scott. I want council people to be mindful of my time. I have to be down to Annapolis for the 40th District event that they have, and so I'm asking that you keep your remarks brief so we can get down to Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to simply say that as of the beginning of this meeting, we have had 39 homicides in the city of Baltimore in 2017. One of those individuals was under the age of 18, and three were female, including a young woman who is a resident of my district, Ms. Chadwick, who was murdered recently, and we know that we're still looking for a suspect in this case, and this is another example where I have to say that we have to stop waiting until it impacts us directly. We have to treat every one of these. These are not just 39 individuals gone. These are 39 families dealing with trauma, 39 communities dealing with trauma, and we have to understand that all of us have to care all the time. We can't just care when it's someone that we know, or something related to someone that we know. We have to care all the time. So if you know where this young gentleman, I use that term lightly, is at, tell us. If you know where some of the other people that we are looking for are at, tell us. Don't allow murderers to run free in the city of Baltimore simply because it does not directly impact you, because one day it will. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for a moment of silence for Albert Kopp. Many of you may know, he was the former president of the Charles Center and Inner Harbor Management, Inc. Spent a good 20 years of his career helping to lead the development of the inner harbor, but far more important than that, his wife is a very dear friend of many people in this room, Lori Schwartz, who heads up the Waterfront Partnership. Lori was quoted as saying he didn't care about getting attention and publicity. He was more about roll the sleeves up and get it done, as I think many of us can appreciate. So I just wanted to send out my thoughts and prayers to Lori and her family, and ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Kopp.
Okay, thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Pinkett, that would be the last one. I have to get down to Annapolis, guys, and we can hold these announcements till a later date. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello. I'm allowing you to go, but that's the last one. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, February 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Pennsylvania Avenue Triangle Park, it's at 2,000 Pennsylvania Avenue and Pressman Street, myself, Councilman Costello, Councilman Bullock, and Councilman Scott will join in a march in solidarity against the surge of violence. We'll be partnering with the police department, State's Attorney's Office, and many community leaders. We welcome the community at large to join us, as well as our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that myself and several of my colleagues will be going down to Annapolis tomorrow to testify against House Bill 317, which is a preemption bill. You know, frankly, we were elected to be able to address issues around wages and benefits in our jurisdictions, and it's an issue that's really important, so I just wanted to extend a thank you to everyone that would be coming down or have submitted testimony, as well as our colleagues in adjacent jurisdictions that are stepping up to the plate and pushing back against an attempt to remove our ability to address the concerns and that are relevant to the people here in Baltimore City. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, February 27th, 2017, and also want to announce to be mindful that tomorrow is National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day, and remember, there's lots of education, testing is important, and that's a very important day. Also, a moment of silence for Mr. Albert Kopp and his family, Mr. Grace and his family, also Ms. Tonja Chadwick, and all the 39 victims in Baltimore City.
Thank you. There be no more business before this board. This meeting concludes the fourth meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.